And welcome to the Woodbury Zoning Board of Appeals meeting. Please rise for the pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Good evening, once again. I'm glad that people came out on such a beautiful, beautiful evening. Hope I won't be keeping you too long. I'd like to introduce our board. To your far right, we have Mr. Michael Wozniak, next is Mr. Edward De Jesus, Ms. Rachel Bruce, Mr. Craig Brady. I'm Karen Unger. Our counsel this evening is Kelly Naughton. Our recording secretary is in the back, and that's Ms. Jessica McLennan. Thank you again for coming. We meet the second Wednesday of every month. Our next meeting in May will be on May 10th. It will also be here in Village Hall. Okay, let's look at the agenda. First on the agenda is executive session. We have none. Second is the minutes. Has everyone read the minutes from March 8?
I'll make the motion.
Yes.
I'm sorry, what?
I'll make the motion.
Okay, second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. New business? We have none. Action on decisions. The first one is SIMCA to First Avenue. Review draft decision for modifications to an existing single-family dwelling, including the construction of a second-story addition and the conversion of the dwelling to year-round use. Said property is in the R2A zoning district on the corner of First Avenue and Scunamuck Road in Highland Hills and is known on the Village of Woodbury tax maps as Section 214, Block 6, Lot 5. We received a letter from the applicant's agent, Mr. Meyer Weinstock, that they are unable to attend this meeting because of Passover. But they don't need to be here, so I will read that decision. There are several pages of facts and findings, and the decision is as follows. As a consequence of the board's discussion, the Zoning Board of Appeals hereby grants the requested area variances described and discussed above, to the extent noted above, conditioned on the applicant receiving all necessary permits from the building department, and hereby finds that the variances, as granted, are the minimum variances necessary to preserve and protect the character of the neighborhood. Per Section 8316-9E of the Village Code, this decision shall expire if a building permit is not obtained by the applicant within 180 days from the date of this decision or the date of final approval by the planning board, if such approval is required. The board may extend this time for one additional period of 90 days if such extension is warranted by the particular circumstances. Do I have a motion to accept this decision or vote on this decision? Second?
Second.
Who was that? Oh, it was Mike? Okay. How do you vote, Greg?
Aye.
Rachel?
Aye.
Ed?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Okay, so SIMCA's will get their variances. Oh, aye, sorry. It's been a long day. Okay, next on the decision, on the agenda. 50 Smith-Clove LLC Review Draft Decision for the Conversion of an Existing Laundromat to Residential Apartments. Said property is located in the HB Zoning District along Smith-Clove Road in Central Valley and is known on the Village of Woodbury tax maps as Section 231, Block 3, Lot 3. And once again, after several pages of facts and findings, the decision is as follows. As a consequence of the board's discussion, the Zoning Board of Appeals hereby grants the requested area variances for the minimum lot area and off-street parking per Village Code 310-7 and 310-40E, as described and discussed above, to the extent noted above, conditioned on the applicant receiving all necessary permits from the building department, and hereby finds that the variances granted are the minimum variances necessary to preserve and protect the character of the neighborhood. As a consequence of the board's discussion, the Zoning Board of Appeals hereby denies the requested area variance relative to the reduced driveway width. That's referring to Village Code 31042E2, as described and discussed above. Per 8316-9E of the Village Code, this decision shall expire if a building permit is not obtained by the applicant within 180 days from the date of this decision or the date of final approval by the planning board, if such approval is required. The board may extend this time for one additional period of 90 days if such extension is warranted by the particular circumstances. Do I have a motion to vote on this?
I'll make that.
Okay, second?
I'll second.
Okay. How do you vote, Greg?
Aye.
Rachel?
Aye.
Ed?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
And I vote aye. I'm sorry, what? Go ahead. Yes, did you want to say something?
I understand the denial of the access link required with associated with that we do have some other options that we can present to the board. Is that still viable?
I think they would need to re-submit.
Yeah, I think they would need to re-sign.
Okay. Next on the agenda is YAN. Review Draft Decision Requesting Variances for the Construction of a Single Family Dwelling. Said property is located in the R1A zoning district at 15 Shewett Place in Central Valley and is known on the Village of Woodbury tax maps as Section 228, Block 6, Lot 7. And once again, after several pages of facts and findings, the decision is as follows. As a consequence of the board's discussion, the Zoning Board of Appeals hereby grants the area variances described and discussed above, to the extent noted above, conditioned on the applicant receiving all necessary permits from the building department, and hereby finds that the variances, as granted, are the minimum variances necessary to preserve and protect the character of the neighborhood. Per Section 8316-9E of the Village Code, this decision shall expire if a building permit is not obtained by the applicant within 180 days from the date of this decision or the date of final approval by the planning board, if such approval is required. The board may extend this time for an additional period of 90 days if such extension is warranted by the particular circumstances. Do I have a motion for this draft decision? Second?
Second, Ed.
Thank you. Okay. Greg, how do you vote?
Aye.
Rachel?
Aye.
Ed?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
And I vote aye. It will be a nice addition to the neighborhood. Okay, next on the agenda, we have public hearings. Oh, no, we have Valdez. Yes, yeah, please. You want me to read the...
You can read that.
Okay. Next on the agenda is Valdez. Review Draft Decision for a Special Permit to Permit a Second Dwelling Unit for a Family Member, Priscilla Arias. Pursuant to Section 31035 of the Village Code, said property is located in the R1A zoning district at 20 Abrams Road in Central Valley and is known on the tax maps as Section 226, Block 1, Lot 37.221.
So if the board recalls at your last meeting, you did authorize the drafting of a decision, but it was subject to reviewing the code to see if it was actually permitted. Upon a review of the plans that were submitted at your meeting at March 9, that was held on March 9, 2023, the project cannot move forward as it is proposed. Specifically, the code section that this is being applied for under Section 310-35, which permits a single-family dwelling to be expanded up to 25% to a maximum of 1,000 square feet of the floor area of the principal dwelling to accommodate the new unit. So the additional dwelling unit could be a maximum of 615 square feet. So if there was a proposal before you for 615 square feet for the additional family dwelling, dwelling for the family member, thank you, additional dwelling unit, that you could consider. But the new dwelling unit is proposed to be 1,948 square feet. Also, what you would need to consider is the plan that is before you doesn't show any setbacks. So this is in addition to an existing single-family house. You would have to have it on a site plan showing the setbacks to confirm that it did comply with the bulk requirements, to see if any additional variances would be needed. And additionally, the plans that were provided to you at the last meeting showed the garage being used, the detached garage being used as an additional dwelling unit. But the code requires that the additional dwelling unit be attached to the principal dwelling, so it cannot be detached. However, I know that in the proposal that was before you, there was the potential for a home occupation to be operated out of the dwelling. The home occupation could be operated out of the detached garage. However, that would require approval from the planning board, not this board. So there are some options out there for the applicant to consider, but the way that I see the application as it stands before you, you don't have the ability to grant it under your current code. I don't know if anybody has any questions on that.
Didn't she have something on the ground floor of the house? She was using that also?
For the home occupation?
For the, she said her daughter and grandson or something were staying there because they needed help?
If it was part of the existing dwelling, she can obviously have her family members stay there, but if it was on...
No, I know about the detached, okay, okay.
And I understand that the applicant was advised of this information as well, so...
Do we do that this evening?
Well, you have this on for consideration of a decision which you can't consider because I haven't provided you with one after looking at the code, so it's up to you.
Can we do a special permit for the bottom of the house?
I don't think the bottom of the house needs one right now.
Oh, you don't have anybody living there?
Can I just speak?
Yes, yeah.
So, thank you for that. So, I wanted to read because last time I was here, I was a little distraught. My son was hospitalized. I didn't get an opportunity to speak on what my history regarding this is. And so I had reached out to the mayor. I had reached out to the town inspector multiple times. Since 2020, my family and I have been impacted with multiple medical, mental health, and financial hardships. I provided that to the town. I provided the Village of Woodbury Building Department multiple applications to include doctor's letters explaining the multiple medical needs and urgency for these projects. My hardship moratorium waiver was denied. I also had to apply for the mother-daughter despite the fact that when I bought this home, it was already considered a home with an in-law apartment. I went ahead and decided to withdraw that application and work with what I had, which was considered at the time an existing outbuilding that was being used for storage. So I decided to work on it. Never has it been used as an additional dwelling unit as of yet because it still has one garage. I was violated. I was served with a violation. I had provided, I spent approximately $12,000 on surveys and planning because when I went to the inspector multiple times, he kept redirecting me without giving me more or less of what I could do. So I was served with a notice of violation that stated that at 101722, there was a lawful inspection. That is not true. I was home with my family, working in the outbuilding at the time that the building inspector, Michael Pennella, claimed that he went, but he never bothered to approach me. I have cameras. I searched my cameras. Not once did he not. Prior to that, I had reported that I couldn't reach him. I kept going to the building inspector. I kept trying to get a response as to how to go about this, and I didn't hear back from him. So after my money, emails, and outreach was that I was served with that violation. I was told that I had to move forward with getting a building application and apply for variance and a hardship waiver. And then he came to my house in July of '22 stating that I have, that the police officers called them because I had a desk outside the front of my property. And when I called the police, they never approached me. I don't know what happened, but at that point, I felt I was being targeted. I received notices, and this was all after I complained. I didn't get responses from Michael P., the town inspector, about my pending applications, my permits, and that was very concerning to me. At that point, I wasn't comfortable. I felt that I was moving forward and being professional and trying my best to do everything as per requirement. I've lived in this town for 24 years. I've served the community. I've never experienced this type of situation. And so when I came to the zoning board and I had provided everything, I remember you guys looking at each other, and no one had my paperwork. It was like, oh, but where is it? And it struck me because I had provided my paperwork multiple times. $12,000 worth of plans and surveys, and now I'm here saying, what's going on? To include medical, which technically, I took it upon myself to do it because I shouldn't have to, but I felt it would prove my hardship and the medical condition going out in my home. So then I came to the zoning board again, and so that happened. I walked out of here, of course, with nothing being approved after the $12,000 I've spent. And so, mind you, when I had worked with Gary Thomason in the past, he was able to help and direct me towards the right direction. And so, I was trying to work. I have a lot of faith in God, a lot of prayers, and all I'm requesting is that I, you know, not told what I can't do, how can I find solutions to move forward and find out what I can do? It's not a mother-daughter. It's a one-family. I proceeded to do the outbuilding because of the multiple medical needs and multiple disabilities that currently live in my household to try to create an additional dwelling unit. And so, I've spent loan money already on that outbuilding, and to have to destroy something after all the hardship and all the work that's gone into will be devastating to the family. It will only cause more distress. And it's too much money have gone into it. I have pictures of what it used to look like when I bought it and what it looks like now. And there's a hotel being built at a walking distance to me. I have a multifamily property right behind me, a commercial property directly across from me, buildings going on, being approved on a quarter of an acre. I have over an acre with non-buildable land around me. I've provided setbacks. I've repaid for extra surveys detailing. I don't know. I don't know what to think of this. And, you know, this is not, I hope to think this is not a group that's out to hurt people. I'm hoping that the zoning board could have consideration and help me, not hurt me more, you know, than I have already, you know, been. The documentation is presently there. What they do with the paperwork when they receive it, I cannot help it. All I can say is, God be my witness, I've provided the paperwork required. And I don't know. I went to making, I worked at supervising a hospital well over 100 to now, barely 30 because of all the hardship that's going on. And so, I just, I'd hate to destroy something that so much work went into because of the need of my family. And so I'm asking for consideration in that manner.
I'm really sorry for all that you've gone through.
Thank you for that.
I don't know where the paperwork went either.
I think all of it was submitted to different boards, and so not all of it goes to... So the hardship waiver that you applied for with the board of trustees was where the medical documents went. The medical documents would not come to this board. It's not part of this application. It was part of that application, so they wouldn't see that. I'm not sure about the other documents. That's still what I can speak to.
Yeah, I don't know. You said you submitted some to the town?
I submitted with, I went to the mayor's, you know, which is right next to the zoning board where you submit the applications. That was so the hardship goes here. I went ahead and provided them with documentations. To be honest, Michael Pennella refused. I mean, he wouldn't even show face when I went there to ask to speak to him. He'd redirect it to Maria or somebody else. And the mayor wrote to me stating he will get back to me regarding my concerns. Never did. It seems like, you know, to be honest, I didn't have, and I said this before, the money to pursue this with an attorney. But at this point, I don't feel that because I don't have money to, for an attorney to represent me, for me to be discriminated on the basis that I don't have the money for an attorney to represent me. And I think that still my hardship should have been viewed, still the medical. Regardless, we're here to help each other. You know, I pay taxes. I pay for people to sit in boards to be able to assist me. And so it's frustrating, to say the least. It's been a frustrating process. You know, this is what it looked like when I first started. It was horrendous, and that's what it looks like now. But of course, I can't delete it. I've not been able to utilize it for anything really because my hands are tied. I'm not going to invite more chaos. So it's not finished, so it's not been used. And it's not true that he did lawful. ADUs were approved in Connecticut, Jersey. I was reading that if it's a hardship and I have an existing space, I could move forward. So that was how I moved forward with this, but with no ill intent.
Right. I think that, you know, ignorance of the law is no excuse. Is that what they're using to apply here? And you didn't know, so you just went ahead.
But the minute I did, I...
You know?
I provided everything.
I just want to correct one statement I said before where I said we didn't have a site plan. We do have the survey from, hold on, let me get the date. It was dated August of 2021. The issue with the survey is it doesn't show where you want the proposed additions, so we wouldn't know what the setbacks were. So I just want the board to be aware of the one document that we do have.
And this one was sent as well. This was the most updated. I had to re印印 on the one.
That's, yeah, that's the one.
That's the one.
But it doesn't show the addition on it. What?
No, she's talking about the detached garage.
So the detached garage is shown on that, but on this one, which is that one, there would be an addition here. Yeah. Based on the other one. Well, she wanted an addition and the garage.
No, no.
No, you didn't want addition. You want to use the lower floor, correct?
Because the money would have been too much and the loan wouldn't have been, so I withdrew that addition meantime.
I thought the original application was for using the lower floor of the house, which was, no?
No, I was gonna do, because I need office space. I need office space. I'm renting.
Okay, I misunderstood.
But I've rented, I have a private practice, and I've had to rent three different locations because people are selling, people are raising. So I was thinking of having an office within my same and expand for room space. But it would have been more inexpensive based on my budget to have gone with doing this. So for now, I can't do the extension because the funding went on the outbuilding.
It's essentially the one we have. There's nothing, it's simply showing the concrete pad.
Oh, the concrete pad.
Yeah.
So you would, like I informed the board before, you would be able to use that, for example, garage as your office. It would be able to be your home office or your home occupation, but that actually would have to go through the planning board, not this board. Those applications are online, so you wouldn't have to contact anyone, or you could contact the clerk's office. And they'd be able to get to that if you wanted to use that outbuilding and the work that's been done in there as your home occupation. I know the floor plans, I don't know if that's how it was constructed or how we were thinking about having it constructed, so I'm not sure.
That's how it's been, and so now the stand-up, the shower's already there and the kitchenette. It's the kitchen with a small stuff, so it would mean having to...
It would mean having to take out the stove, the kitchen sink, and likely the shower. Definitely the shower, likely the kitchen sink, yes. I'm just trying to give you some options since you said you would have any options.
So, can it be considered a mother-daughter, is my question? It would have to be attached to the existing home?
Yes, and it would only be able to be 25% up to a maximum of 1,000 square feet, which...
Of your home.
Check my math, but my math was 600, of the existing home, so it would be 615 square feet, I think. But check that math.
And that's under 550, that space?
It's just not attached to your house. But I did provide all of the information to Mike Viallo.
Well, he's not...
No, but I mean, if you wanted to see it, since we're just kind of throwing it all at you, you can ask him to forward the email that I sent to him, and then you'll have it to look at because it's hard just to take it in. It's all just being thrown out.
So if I were to attach, do an attachment to that unit, would that be considered?
To your house?
From the house?
From the house. You could come back here for that as a mother-daughter. Again, the 25% limitation, and it can only have two residents in it, but I think you said they're related to you anyway, your daughter or your son. So two of them could live in there.
Okay.
But it's just some more information maybe than what you had. So I would say, ask him to send the email, and you'll have the provisions. Or if you want to give me your email, I can send you that information.
Yes, please, because it would mean paying him more money, and I've paid so much money. So I need someone to connect with that can help, and I...
I just don't want it to be on the public record. You can just, you can write it down. I don't want the world sending you anything.
Did you want this back?
Well, I see. You can just write that down. I'll just send you my email and send you the corporate address. How's your son? He's out of the house still, right?
That's the important thing.
Yeah.
Spend plenty of time in the house. It's not a fun place.
No, it is not. Thank you.
They'll go into the building department's files. We'll ask Maria to tell them to everybody.
Enter here.
We'll just kind of put on pause a decision right now until she decides what she wants.
What's to do, yeah. Okay. Alrighty, we'll move on here. We have public hearings. The first one is Woodbury Townhouses. Continuation of public hearing. Requesting a variance for the construction of 12 townhouse units with less than the required acreage and containing parking in the front yard. Whereas pursuant to Section 31049C, the required lot area is 6,000 square feet per unit, requiring 72,000 square feet total, where 59,045 square feet are proposed. And whereas pursuant to Section 310-40E, off-street parking in the front yard is prohibited, and parking within the front yard is proposed. Said property is in the HB Zoning District along Falkirk Avenue in Central Valley and is known on the Village of Woodbury tax maps as Section 231, Block 3, Lot 6.1, 6.2, and 7. We do have a letter from the attorney, Jay Myrow, that they're waiting for the planning board. Hasn't acted on secret yet, so we can't make a decision unless they... So they've asked to have the meeting adjourned until June in hopes that the... in hopes that the planning board will do that. But before we have a motion on that, I'd like to ask if there's anybody here who would, from the public, who would like to make a statement on this decision? Talk to this decision? This decision, this application, I'm sorry. No? Do I have a motion to carry this over to June in hopes that the planning board will make a declaration? Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so Woodbury Townhouses will continue in June. Okay. Next on the agenda is Ross. Continuation of public hearing for a special permit to permit a second dwelling unit for a family member, Martina España. Pursuant to section 310-35 of the village code, said property is located in the R1A zoning district at 6 Carroll Drive in Highland Mills and is known on the tax maps as section 202, block 1, lot 46. The applicant is not present. Can we move forward?
I see, and normally, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
So you say normally you don't. But I would like to update the board on where this one stands after the last meeting. And then I think the applicant would love it if you-
I'm sure.
So on this one, just as a brief note, it's very much different than the last one you just heard. At the end of the last meeting where you discussed this application, you requested that I go back to the code, take a look and see really how the application could proceed along. I had conversations with the building inspector regarding interpretations of section 310-35 for the additional dwelling unit. And the subsection C, subsection D, the one that limits it to the 20 feet. Darn it, I was close. The one that limits it to 25% or 1,000 square feet is for a new addition or an expansion of the existing house. And he has determined that this, Ms. Ross's property is existing. There is no proposed addition. There is no proposed expansion of any sort. So in that regard, she's not limited by the square footage constraint. She will still be limited by the number of individuals that can reside there and they would need to sign the decision as well so that they are aware that if and when they transfer the property to somebody else, the kitchen facilities would need to be removed and it would revert to its original single-family state. But that it is permitted to proceed in the fashion that it's been presented to you. Does anything?
Well done.
She gets paid the big bucks. Any discussion on this? Questions, concerns?
No. So can we recommend for the year's sharing of the special permit?
Well, I'd like to see if there's anybody here who wants to speak to this.
Yeah, no one's fine.
Do I have a motion to open it? Oh, to, to open it to the public, yeah. Anybody? Anybody in the audience wish to speak to this application? Nope? Okay. Go ahead. You had a-
A motion to close the public hearing? Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so we will deliberate at the end. Okay. Oh, yeah. Okay. Next on the agenda is, I think it's pronounced Mian. Public hearing for a temporary special permit for the construction of a dwelling unit for additional family members. Whereas pursuant to section 310-35, a temporary special permit may be granted by the zoning board of appeals for an additional dwelling unit for the use of family members in accordance with certain requirements. Said property is located in the R1A zoning district along Gregory Lane in Central Valley and is known on the Village of Woodbury tax maps as section 228, block 6, lot 16. And the applicant is present, correct? Would you go to the podium and state your name, please?
My name is Alphonse Mian.
Okay. So what you wanna do is add a 26 by 26 addition to the left side of your house if you're facing the house.
Correct.
The plans say 715, but 26 by 26 is 676. So what, where'd that extra footage come from?
The architect had to add a set of stairs going down to the basement. So this is discrepancy, I guess, in the square footage for the stairs that were added.
I was gonna ask about those stairs. Cuz you said it was a one level and then I saw stairs and I was gonna-
Yeah, my house is, the original structure is pretty much elevated on a basement. So I would, I'd imagine it would look a little bit funny if, if the addition was not elevated as well on a basement.
Okay. But it looks from the plans that you need area variances for setbacks in the rear yard side, both sides and rear yard.
I believe I need a, of area variance for the front yard. I'm not too sure about the side yard. It's, it's an irregular shaped piece of property.
Yes, it is.
And there's been some discrepancy as to what exactly the side yard to that piece of property is. It's also a corner lot. So it has technically two front yards and one side yard.
Right, well, the code also-
We love, we love corner lots.
Yeah, don't we? So the maximum that you would be allowed, based on the square footage of your house, is 551 and a half square feet of-
My, my square footage right now of the original house is 2,700 square feet.
You've got 2206.
There's a, there's a finished basement also of 500 square feet.
So what is it, 20, 20?
2706, I believe.
Okay.
Yeah, 2,706 square feet. Multiply that by 25%, you get 6.676.5 square feet.
So it's 2,700 what?
2,706.
Thank you.
Okay.
And that's because of the, the-
The finished basement, yes.
So the basement that's, oh, I see, never mind.
The existing, the basement of the existing house. Part of it is finished. The rest of it is a garage.
Okay. Well, that changes things because I was going to ask, you know, talk about the, the size and the setbacks and, you know, all that. So the stairs are going down to an unfinished basement?
That's correct.
I doubt, well, will your, are your parents?
Yes, yes.
Be using those basement steps to go down?
No, that's just before access to the boiler or, you know, utilities.
So it's basically the boiler room?
Boiler room, yeah.
Okay. So you need, so you do not need a variance for the square footage?
No.
But we would need to verify that square footage or no?
That would be one of the conditions-
That, that it was, yeah.
Building inspector verify.
Okay.
I just got a question, actually. Forgive me. And I'm just asking just to make sure, someone, make sure I have all the information. Obviously, 26 by 26 is 676 square feet.
Right.
I have the max, about 25% would be, actually, nevermind, I take that back. I, I answer my question then. Disregard-
Probably like I just did.
Yeah.
Unfortunately, there's no rewind.
So it says 26 by 26, but then you've got the bump out. So when I did the math, it's on the floor. 715.
Yeah, it does.
The bump out is to fit the stairway that was added. Technically, stairways aren't included in the square, in square footage.
So is that the stairway that's in between the bedroom and the living room?
That's the bump out?
Yes, that's why that, that section, if you look, is bumped out by three feet, two and a half feet, whatever the width of stairway is.
I had a question, I forgot what it was. What about the, you have a proposed covered porch? Is that?
Yeah, I would change, I was proposing to change my porch to a covered porch to meet the outside doorway to the, to the new structure.
But that had, is that included in your square footage? Is that included in your square footage?
No, that would be something new.
Okay. There are no dimensions there for the covered porch?
Okay, if that's an issue, I could take the cover off the porch. That's, that's no big deal.
That would be on the existing home, anyway.
Right, right.
Why would that, why would that impact?
Oh, because you said it was for, it was for the door for the addition.
But it's not-
It's basically on the existing structure.
The main structure? Okay.
I think it would be the issue for the, to, to put that on would then be the front yard setback that's noted lower in there. So you put it on, it's just a different set of requests. That's all we're talking about. I'll have to run the part about the stairway by the building inspector to make sure he agrees with that regarding the calculation. But that makes my math right, which is why I say check my math. Or makes my, whatever, check my math.
Well, we can't make any decision this evening anyway cuz the 239 hasn't come back.
Right.
So if the square footage is correct, then they need still a variance for the side and, I guess that would be the side, that would be the front.
But what's the side?
Right.
Well, the front of the house faces this way. So this is the main road.
So I did actually check with the building inspector on what the lot lines were. And I have a nice colored map.
Ooh.
From the building inspector. So the front lot line, he's considering that the lot line along Gregory Lane. And the little lot line that's 21.6 feet along Dunderberg.
Okay.
Then if you're facing the house from Gregory, the line to your right, that's the side lot line.
Side line, right.
Every, the other three lot lines are rear lot lines. So-
Okay.
So the, the line all the way to the, I guess, my left would be the side lot line?
Nope, that one's also a front. So it's-
That one's also a front.
Sorry. It's about as big as I can get it.
Yes.
You're admiring my skills.
Okay, so that's the front.
The front.
Rear, rear, rear.
Side. Rear goes from the back quarter.
Yeah. And I had him emailed, uh, rear, rear, him, of the, him, to get the other dimension of this corner, not just this one. Just to report that into compliance.
Not really, because now-
No, I mean, he's really-
He's got-
That was very, no, it's a section. So, but just to bring the property itself, the existing dwelling, into compliance with the current setbacks. I did ask him for that dimension since that's considered now- Cuz it's a confusing layout.
Yes, it is. It is very confusing. Why'd you buy that house?
It's like, it looks, I mean, you can't even see it.
It's a great house. It is a great house.
Oh, yeah, it's a nice house.
Like a landscape.
Yeah, it's pretty.
Yeah. I'm sure a lot of us want to know.
So you've got that fence along the left side? Is that about, how long is that fence? Just to give me a visual of how big the addition would be?
It wouldn't go past that, that fence. It's probably about 30 feet, that fence on the side, on the left-hand side.
Okay, so it would be-
Within-
Within the fence area? Okay, cuz I was trying to figure out, you know, okay. And I think that they gave the, the distance from the, as the rear, or I guess, I don't know what they considered it, 20, a side yard, he considered, because that's the closest point to the corner property, yeah.
And then I asked for this dimension from the existing dwelling to the closest rear yard, and that's 33.29 feet.
So that's pre-existing?
That's pre-existing, but I thought-
Yeah, just to save-
He's here for variances and a special permit. Bring the property into compliance.
Yep.
So it's not necessarily following what's in the zoning requirements chart on the side just based on the findings of the rear yard and the side yard.
Okay. Any other questions from the board? My questions are moot now because the square footage changed.
The square footage changed.
Yeah, so I, yeah.
So just to summarize for the board, though, I think the variances, so with the covered porch, you'd be looking for the special permit for the additional dwelling unit for the family member. Minimum lot area, which is a pre-existing non-conforming condition, has 2,500, 25,200 square feet, seeking a variance of 18,360 square feet cuz it's a minimum one acre zoning.
Yeah.
So that's pre-existing non-conforming. The minimum front yard setback from Gregory Lane, that's with the covered porch. The minimum rear yard setback from the existing dwelling, which was the 33.29. The proposed dwelling, which is the 20.26.
Yep.
And then in terms of secret, this is a type 2 action. And we did refer this to the county planning department, but 30 days have not passed and we haven't gotten a decision yet. For the applicant, that just means it goes to the county planning department and they have to weigh in as to whether or not there's any intermunicipal impacts from me putting this on. They have 30 days to reply. If they don't, if they do reply, or if, and it's, it would likely be a local determination. Or if they don't reply within that 30 days, then the board has jurisdiction to act. So that's just summarizing where we are.
Okay.
To allow you the covered porch, if that's, if they agree.
Board of any questions, concerns? No? Anyone from the public wish to speak to this application? You have anything to add, sir?
No, so I guess moving forward, I come to the next board meeting? Is that how it works?
Right, but if, right, if, if we don't get the 239 back, we can act without it.
Okay.
And we'll see, you know. I'm sure it's probably against a local determination. Yeah, because it's not impacting traffic or anything like that.
No.
But, yeah, so we would have to, you know, carry this over to next month.
Okay.
All right?
Thank you very much.
Alrighty.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Do you have a motion to carry this over to next month?
The 239 in the forehand. But if you'd like, you can do some discussion and offer something if that's what you're looking at before.
No. You read my mind because we've done that before.
You have? Because it's not conditional.
Correct.
That's true, yeah, yeah. All right, wait, hold that motion, Rachel.
I'm not holding anything.
No, 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 Rachel's holding her motion.
That's fine.
Do you wanna make a motion to?
We need to open the public hearing, right?
What was that? I'm sorry, what?
Do we, did we open the public hearing?
Yeah, nobody wished to speak, yeah.
That's what you're doing?
Yes.
I guess.
She was motioning to carry it over to next month.
Wait, I'm sorry, I was, I'm glad you're motioning close.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. Okay, so you want a motion to discuss-
I'd like to review the five-part test for the variances.
At the end of the meeting?
Now, please.
Now?
Per council's recommendation.
Who wants to discuss it right now? Because you wanna go into the deliberation like that after the public hearing's closed. So since the public hearing's going to be adjourned, you'd like to have these discussions now, present. So that possibly, I think he's going to make a motion later to authorize something-
You think?
I mean, he's giving me the wink, wink over here for kind of the, what I meant. But he, he is asking if the board would go through the five-part.
I have no problem with that.
Correct.
Okay.
We're trying to be expeditions.
I don't think I have the- Yeah, yes, I don't have a- You do?
No.
I don't have, I think he was looking for the special permit, not the variances, and that's why he didn't complete the area, that, that part of it?
Well, that's fine. You can still read them and just say your feelings on it.
Okay. Let's go through the five-part test. I should know them by heart, but I'm not, what I'm gonna do, hold on.
Oh, yeah, you're mentally-
Yes.
It's just a case of, well, they order-
She was prepared for this eventuality.
You never know.
You never know, here it is.
We have a five-part, uh, five-part factors to, five factors to consider. If we don't agree or don't, you know, we don't have to have a positive answer to each one. We could still, it doesn't preclude us from granting, okay? Uh, okay, number one, whether and under, will and under, whether an undesirable change will be produced in the character of the neighborhood or a detriment to nearby properties will be created by the granting of the area variance. I personally don't see a problem with it. Um, the, to the left of the addition would be the wooded area, that's there, currently there. Um, the closest he would be would be to that property in the rear, and that person has not written a letter or appeared here, or, you know, I'm sure they received a notice. So I don't believe there'll be an undesirable change. Anyone disagree with that?
No.
No? Okay. Number two, whether the benefits sought by the applicant can be achieved by some method feasible for the applicant to pursue other than an area variance? Have them live in their basement.
I mean, no.
No, because, you know, first of all, they're older, and they'd be going up and down steps, which for older people can be very challenging. Um, I really can't think of any other way to do it. Okay, number three, whether the requested vary, area variance is substantial.
Well, I think it's a typical numerically, potentially substantial, but in the context.
Fix of the property, it's, it's not.
Agreed, and, you know, we're considering.
I'm sorry, ma'am.
No, I mean, the finished basement.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Number four, whether the proposed variance will have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental condition in the neighborhood or district. I don't see any.
I don't see any.
I mean, there's no wetland there or anything, is there? And number five, whether the alleged difficulty was self-created. Um, well, it usually is because that's what you want, and it's not allowed, so basically, yeah, it's self-created. Um.
Agreed.
So, Mr. Brady, would you like to make a motion?
So what is our process? We, we need to carry over.
You're gonna need to make a motion to adjourn till the next meeting for the public hearing, but if you'd like, you can also make a motion to authorize a draft decision consistent with tonight's discussions, but you wouldn't be able to take action on that until after you close the public hearing.
Correct.
Okay.
So I'll make a motion that we, um, is it one motion or two?
I like two, it's clearer for the minutes.
Two, it's clearer. So which one first?
You have to close the public hearing before you can.
Well, we're carrying over the public hearing.
Oh, right.
The order doesn't matter. So a motion to carry over the public hearing to our next meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
And a motion to request counsel to provide a draft decision consistent with our discussion this evening.
I second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so next month, public hearing will continue. We'll probably close it if, you know, there's no one here or whatever. And, uh, we then discuss the draft decision, and you'll know then.
This doesn't usually happen, but you have the information.
Yeah.
Is there any other paperwork I'm gonna send over?
Not at this time.
Not to us.
Um, you will have to, you know, provide the names, they'll have to, uh, sign the paperwork for living in that new addition.
Should they be here at the next meeting or?
No, they don't need to be here.
You can bring it to the building department after the final decision is signed in there, they'll be able to sign, and then you'll get a copy of that fully signed decision.
So just a future process from my own perspective, wouldn't it make sense for that to happen at the point where the building is created and finished? Because they can't use it until then, and then a year from then.
The permit is technically being issued in connection with.
Construction.
So they should be signing the decision.
Not ahead of time.
Okay, works for me.
It's an option of the code, I don't disagree, but I spent a lot of time with it today, as you know.
Yet another opportunity for us to revise our code. I won't say that, I didn't say that, I didn't say that.
Okay, so next month you'll return, and we'll figure it out.
Okay.
All righty, thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Have a good night.
Okay, next on the agenda, we have the Shops at Woodbury, public hearing for variances for the construction of a multi-tenant directory pylon sign from Village Code Sections three-ten dash thirty D two C and Chapter three-ten, Attachment eleven, relative to size of signs. Said property is located in the IB and HO zoning districts along Losi Lane and New York State Route seventeen thirty-two and six in Central Valley, and is known on the Village Woodbury tax maps as Section two-two-five, Block one, lots three-four, thirty-four point one, thirty-four point twenty-two, and seventy-five, and I see that the applicants have, are here, I've been patiently waiting.
That was quick. I saw the agenda, I was like, oh, I have more time. Very efficient. No, hopefully I don't screw up that efficiency, so I'll try my best.
Are you done?
I can be. You tell me. Um, so, uh, good evening, my name's Anthony Morando, I'm a land use attorney, uh, working with the Shops at Woodbury, uh, with our client, Aaron Goldclang. Our architect is here this evening, as well as Steve Esposito, one of our design professionals.
You first really want an interpretation, correct?
Uh, yeah, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna walk through if that's okay with you.
Okay, sure.
First thing is, uh, Kelly had asked me for a short EAF, so I brought copies, Kelly, I can give it to you.
Okay, I don't think we can consider it.
No, we distributed it, uh, the.
We got it.
Distributed it earlier today.
We got it.
Okay.
Yep.
Uh, so, yeah, so if you have our submission from March twenty-ninth, uh, effectively what we're seeking are, we have two requests. Um, in laypeople term, I would say, one is, how do you calculate sign area, and the second one is, how do we address, uh, its non-compliance with your maximum limitation for the applicable zoning district? Uh, just by way of background, for those who don't know this project, uh, the Shops is located, um, on Losi Lane between seventeen and, and six. It's, it's under construction right now. Uh, it's a mixed-use commercial center with restaurants, retail, um, a courtyard Marriott, that's, it's all in the process, and, uh, we've been before the planning board for many years. Now, we had, we came back recently because we have tenants in place, so we've been working with Kelly and village staff, as well as the planning board for a number of months now, uh, getting ARB approval for each of those pad sites, uh, for a number of tenants, uh, some of which you see on the sign here. Uh, the part of the project also is getting an ARB approval for the pylon sign, which is what you're looking at here, the freestanding multi-tenant sign. And as part of the planning board process, we bifurcated that out of the site plan because, uh, I, I think it's fair to say, and Kelly can correct me if I'm wrong, uh, the board had fairly positive feelings about the pylon sign that we, that we had proposed, uh, and I think staff did as well. So the option was to determine, number one, how are we calculating sign area for it, because it's a fairly aesthetically pleasing sign, we think. And, uh, based on that, do we need a variance? And it turned out that the feeling is we do. The first request is an interpretation just on calculation. I think if I can boil it down to keep it simple, the question really is, is, does the framework and the stone veneer surrounding the actual, uh, messaging for the tenant spaces, is that part of the sign calculation for sign area? Um, and what we referenced was, and, and it's, it's actually the last sentence of your Planning Board Engineers', uh, uh, referral document, where it's, it talks about Section one-thirty-D two-C four, and really the question is, is, that says expressly that framework is excluded from area calculation. Our view is that the stone veneer, which is decorative in nature and only for structural purposes, is framework by definition. So we didn't think that would be included. Uh, the planning board engineer had a conversation with the building inspector, and I think the feeling was that the framework was included, but that was where the rubber didn't really hit the road for us because we weren't sure how to deal with that since it said it was excluded. So what you may see in the planning board engineering memo is a number like five hundred, and I apologize, and I'm gonna use Kelly's reference here. Uh, don't have lawyers do math, so that's why I hope we can work together with a calculator, but the, 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 the number, uh, somewhere around five hundred and forty square feet, uh, was referenced in Natalie's memo, uh, when we think it's more like two-eighty. And I could walk you through really quickly how that number is playing out here. Based on the, that, that document, conversation with the building inspector and our view of the code, when you look at this area here, and, and I think if you look at the definition of sign, it actually says the word frame, as is, as does another section of the same individual we were talking about, well, frame to us, I think, is that rim around, right? You include that, so that, that's the frame of a picture, for example. The framework would be the structural area here, which we think is excluded. So because our sign is thicker than eighteen inches, it's actually at its, at its base, it's about two and a half feet, so it's not much thicker than eighteen inches, but when you combine the other signage, I think, um, you could, you could find a different way to say what the width is, but we're not disputing that point. What we're saying is, if you calculate two sides, meaning this side and the other side, it's a hundred and forty square feet on either side, so when you times that by two, it's two-eighty. So that's how we got to two-eighty, and the IB zone where this project is located, instead states that, uh, two hundred, uh, two hundred square feet is the maximum area for a freesti, freestanding, uh, multi-tenant sign. So that was our proposal to the board, and the reason we brought that up first is we wanted to make sure we knew exactly what we were asking for with our variance, because that would be a different review request for you.
I think we should discuss the interpretation first. Do you think that the framework is included or excluded? Any thoughts on that?
So it's not included. That's what made it clear, but because this doesn't have brackets or whatever. I guess it's open to interpretation whether it's included or not. But the code, yeah, but the code says, um, let's try just add. Um, "The area of supporting framework shall not be included if some such framework is incidental in the display." I'm looking at it as there's no writing on it, you know, there's no arrows, there's no writing. The signs, I believe, are flush with the side. In other words, um, when you put the different tenants on the sign.
I'm looking to Chuck to make sure I'm not wrong.
Sideways, you know, that side view that you have there. So it appears that it's flush, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, so it doesn't extend beyond that. I, that's my opinion. You want to give your opinion, Mr. Brady? It doesn't seem that...
It's incidental to the signage itself.
Yeah, you know. And this is going up basically catty corner from the Kohl's sign.
Yeah, actually.
Right on the corner of thirty-two and Losi Lane, but on the, if you're looking at the driveway that goes in beyond the left, correct?
I actually just printed these out.
I think I saw it somewhere that, you know.
Yeah, it's in there.
Yeah, yeah.
If you take one each here.
Yeah.
And here's another one. This is just for your view of the site itself.
Okay. What about you, Rachel? What do you think? Think it's part of the sign or just a supporting structure?
I mean, I see both of those arguments, honestly. My primary concern with anything, um, I see both, I see both sides of the sign a little bit more. But my main concern is, well, just like, how, um, how far does it stick out in terms of when you go to make that, that right turn? You know, just because it does stick out a little bit, um, from the larger stone structure? Is it, I mean, is there a...
What larger? No, 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 no. Oh, go ahead.
Yeah, well, I'm gonna ask Chuck our detective to stand up just to make sure I'm not making mistakes, so Chuck, jump up here and help me with this on the dimensions. When you say stand up, you mean?
Like that, yeah.
This, this plank here. That's three feet.
That's three feet, okay.
And if you can see, um, it's very good visual to show you where the sign actually is, it's set pretty, pretty solidly into the, into the site itself.
Okay, that was my, that was, that was just one of my concerns, you know, if you're gonna make that right turn, I just wouldn't want it to be difficult to see.
It's not near the road. It's not near the road.
No.
Not really. It's set back.
No, I understand.
Yeah, and the location of the sign was, the sign itself, this visual was not considered by the planning board as part of the site plan approval necessarily.
Okay.
But the location of it was on, is on the approved site plan.
Okay.
Yeah.
I, I personally see it as being framework more than anything, I think, that other than the brackets attaching, not attaching.
So it's part, what you're saying, it's part of the framework?
Yeah. I mean, whether it's...
It's incidental to the signage, but it's necessary for the signage. What do you think, Ed?
I don't see it as part of the sign. I see like a support structure.
Yeah.
A question would be then, how big can we make that? If we don't consider it part of the sign, what if someone just decided, well, maybe the sign stays like?
That would probably fall, uh, Kelly can certainly weigh in better than me, but that would probably fall under wall signage, which is regulated differently.
Well, say that your structure was twice the size, do we not count that as part of the sign?
I think that would probably be regu... Sorry.
I think it would be, um, considered by the ARB as too big or demonstrate why you need something that's, you know, if they don't like the look of it and they extended that up thirty feet for some who knows why reason, I think at that point the ARB would say, what is the purpose? There's another purpose here. This is not architecturally pleasing. The code doesn't specifically say, um, anything regarding the size of the support structure, um, but if you look around town, I mean, there's, there's different ones to try and compare it to, like the, the one with Kohl's. There's some monument signs, so there's really nothing in your code that defines that, so I would say we'd go back to the ARB.
Other question I would have, maybe I'm mistaken on this. We have one forty on one side and one forty on the other side. That, we're, do we count that as two separate or is that two eighty?
That is such a good ques... I'm gonna roll back so I can actually see. That is such a good question, but because there is a subsection.
It's, yeah.
D two, C two.
R two, B two.
Which is...
It's in the same, it's in the same four provision sect. It's, it's, yeah.
And that says back to back or two sided signs under eighteen inches in width, having identical messages on each side of the sign shall be calculated by the computation of the area on one side under the appropriate geometric formula provided in this section, and such sign shall be considered part of the sign. So it's interesting that you raise that because the, confirming that you are keeping one side being the same size, you're not gonna have McDonald's, Starbucks, they're all gonna be the same.
Nope, that's correct.
Okay. So the width of the, nope, not yet, Chuck. So the width of the sign that's proposed there is eight inches on each panel, which the support structure is in between and that is one foot.
If we consider it a support structure.
That's the interesting part of this, now, this is fine. Now, that, now, so this is actually about eighteen inches.
Right.
And then this has...
Another eight on each side, which brings it to two, yeah.
But then this is eight inches here, so then you need eight, D T D. I guess that's how it is interpreted.
No, I think they just took the one forty on one side, one forty on the other, made it two eighty.
Correct, right.
And it was over the two hundred they were, yeah.
The actual width of the signs.
Close the overall width.
Right, 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 yeah.
What is the width of the top of the, so?
So then it, oh, sorry. No, Kelly, did you say something? I'm not sure I understood.
It depends on how the board views it. If you view it as the width of the sign, which is...
Inclusive of the supporting structure.
Then it's...
Too big.
Too big.
And we'd have to go both sides, one forty times two.
And then if they'd need an eighty square foot variance, or if you read it the other way where each panel is only eight inches each, then it's sixteen inches, and then that...
We actually don't need variance.
Then you don't need a variance, you just need that to be included in the interpretation.
So it's higher than the ones?
It's however this board talks about it, and I write it down.
So the question is, why do they need to just put one hundred?
What was the question? Mike?
Oh, if, why does the sign have to be a hundred and forty? I mean, I'm assuming there's some kind of explanation for that.
Well, you see the number of tenants that are gonna be on the property, and you look at the height of the sign area, two feet is usually as small as the height of the sign. It's actually smaller than the two feet, and then we're splitting the ten feet in half, so it's really a sign that's two by five. You start getting smaller, that the letter becomes an issue to see, so as a design standard, you usually start at two foot high, and either five feet wide or ten, whatever. In case the courtyard merit, they're the only one that get the, they get the full panel to play, two by ten. Corrals were splitting it in half. Just a little background, the planning board, the, we worked very hard when we first started designing those apartments, and they made it a point that they were looking for a comprehensive design theme that I was able to develop that they liked, and it became so popular that the last hearing, they actually asked the Marriott if they could incorporate some of the materials and colors that I'm proposing for the rest of the shopping center into their building. And the board was very pleased, and last went, then when I came back, they married it, agreed to use the wood and one of my stucco colors as their main body color.
That's nice.
On the hotel, so that made the planning board very happy that we now have a comprehensive design theme throughout. And when I hear that, and I know I want to do that, I consider pre-stated any sign, monument sign, pylon sign, to be a part of that comprehensive theme. And there is a feature on one of my buildings that has this kind of model lift that comes up with that exact stone, with that exact wood, the tenant name at the top, so I kind of carried that through to say, as you enter the property, you see this, and it's just the beginning of what you're gonna see when you drive in with all the other buildings, because they will incorporate many of these materials that you see here throughout the property. And that made the planning board, they are the chair of the Marriott.
Sort of like a, like a brand kit for development.
Yeah, and, and, and Aaron, our client, we're, we pressured him pretty hard to get him to agree essentially what they do, because Chuck is very pumped about that, that he would all work. But just go back to your point about the size, what we talked about for variance, because that goes to, um, the benefit versus any detriment. If you, you know this area better than I do, visibility here is critical, right? It's not exactly a spot where there's a lot of stuff around it, you have to kind of see it when you come down the road, so, um, besides the sort of design and architectural and structural side of things, just from a visibility standpoint, if you go smaller with tenant names, with this many tenants, because it's a big facility, it'll be really hard to distinguish them.
I understand, especially if people coming down, downward six.
And not every building is probably gonna have a national tenant, so we've gotta put the national on there, but if you get a smaller shop, they're not gonna be as defined, say, is it?
You know what they're starving.
It's Burger King, right?
Yeah.
Question would be, I mean, I'm, I'm sure this is laid out in other areas, but it just came to mind, I'm, I'm assuming that this is the finite amount of stores, that there's never gonna be an expansion on the sign. No, is it, otherwise it's not framework anymore.
Well, I, my, I don't know if it's it. I, I, I think the sign, that's in terms of sign area that gets permitted is what's permitted. If a space gets split up later for, ten thousand square feet gets split to five, I think, she said it's probably, you'd probably have to split a ton, a, a, ten times.
So then you'd be going down to smaller sizes.
Well, I don't think that's...
My question, I would do the hundred then instead of the hundred forty.
This would not capture every tenant in the property, so they would make a negotiation probably sometime. You pay a couple bucks more in your rent, you get to get on the pile. One of those is, 'cause one building has five tents alone, plus the Starbucks, so that's six tents that I already am showing, and then you have seven other buildings beside that.
The relief we get or don't get, we're limited to whatever.
Just a question of, if we were, what you had said, just getting back to, is if you had said there was gonna be more added on, and we would split one of those sizes, then it makes, then it kind of defeats your other...
Correct.
Of what you were just saying, that you needed that size.
That's what I was just, well, I was...
Oh, you were going back to, okay.
I was gonna say, that's why you wouldn't do it.
I don't think the client or the applicant would want to do that.
Yeah, no, that's why I was holding my, my...
Okay. Thank you for...
Yeah. Yeah, and we actually, we, we actually looked at what it would be like, you know, if you take that off, and you sort of end up with this lot of...
Yeah, it's much prettier.
It's nice. Yeah, so it's, I don't think that's what the code is promoting, I think it's just sort of a nuance in the language.
No, of course, I mean, like, no, we're not really, we're here for aesthetics and some, you know, in terms of just making sure that, like, if it's within the sort of standard that we have for the community, but, you know.
Oh, it calls.
That's something that's dedicated.
And they've got just brackets.
Another issue is we've got to maintain the clearance at the bottom. So I could have, I could have shortened it, make the minimum of seven foot clearance, and then we go from up some more. Of course, it would have worked. If I go lower, then you could maybe made the whole sign a little smaller, but we have to provide that seven foot clearance at the bottom.
I'm all about, unlike my shape.
Tell me about it.
Any other questions, comments from the board? We didn't really discuss that portion of it, we just talked about the, the stonework. So, yeah, Kelly just brought up a good point. The, if you look at the side view, it's a side elevation, eight inches for each sign, and then the stonework, you know, that's in between, is a foot and a half. They're allowed to have up to eighteen inches of the sign, so are you going, if we include the stonework as part of the sign, it'll be over the eighteen inches. If we don't, as just a support, the signs are eight, that's only sixteen inches, which is less than the eighteen inches maximum that's allowed.
Is it possible to make the, um, decrease the width, or is it, or is it a...
No.
...patched, covered a little bit?
I mean, you wouldn't want to hold a sign that big.
Hold on, Chuck, one second. It's, it's, I don't think it's that we're not allowed to have more than eighteen inches, I think it's that if you go over eighteen inches, you have to times it by two.
Right.
Oh, right, yeah, right.
So it's not, it's not that it's not permitted, it's that we need a variance from the air, sign area. Right. Being under eighteen inches is effectively a waiver from, from that standard, is what I would say, but... So if we, but if you... Relief in your code. But, but if you, if you, if you determine that it's not eighteen inches based on the design, then we wouldn't, the, the relief we're asking for would stop at an interpretation, we wouldn't need the variance, because we'd be at one forty instead of two eighty.
Right, instead of two eighty, correct. Anybody else have thoughts? Rachel, did you?
I was just gonna say, being also a consistency person, if we're not considering the framework as part of the signage area...
You talk about the frame or the stonework?
On the front, on the front, the stonework.
Stonework.
The sort of supporting structure. If we're saying it's supporting structure on the front and it's not part of the sign area, then I think we should consider eight and eight as the width, because it's the same structure.
I mean, say, I mean, think of them also, I mean, not just...
No, I agree.
This really matters, but it's also, it's, it's offset, I mean, it's very obviously a frame.
So I'm...
Well, you would talk...
In favor of the interpretation that it's sixteen inches, which allows them to not need, need a variance.
For the two eighty.
For the two eighty, correct.
Mike and Ed, you agree?
Does that create a, a, in terms of...
No.
No.
I don't think so.
I didn't understand, I didn't hear the whole question.
President.
No, what I was...
President.
Well, it'll be presidential in any future applications that come in, certainly, so each one is, you have another pilot line...
Well, only if the, right, but...
That is coming in, and so depending on how that reads...
Right.
You'll have to reply that.
Frame is, where they have the sign, and it's a different, the frame is like, you have to describe.
Okay, but I... Yeah. Okay, you have the signs, and then you said you had a frame around the signs, correct? That's included in the square footage, and then that portion of the signs will be placed on the stonework, and the sides are flush, and the top and bottom obvi... Well, you know, it's just sent, okay.
Is the name of the, is the shop at Woodbury considered signage?
It's not considered signage.
It's not considered signage, really?
Not according to, yeah, not according to the engineers, or architects or somebody. Okay, so, does everyone agree that the stonework is a supporting structure that's incidental to the signage, because it has no writing on it, no arrows, no, none of that? Or do you disagree?
If, just one, one last question.
Mm-hmm. No, no, no.
If, I just want to make sure that we, that the, so, obviously the stone itself has no writing on it, but the portion that says the shops at Woodbury is not considered part of the sign, then is it...
Correct. I don't know what it's considered, I think it's just, uh, it's that, it says on one of these pages that it's not considered signage.
I promise I'm not saying this in any way to give you a break, I just want to make sure I have a clear answer.
I think, yeah.
I can certainly get you a response from the building inspector on that for your next meeting. I have a feeling that it might be a private sign of a non-commercial nature, which is in the public interest, including directional regulatory warning for informational signs, including been noted to entrance, exit, parking, one-way, et cetera.
On page one of section B, the planning board engineer referral does not identify shops at Woodbury as signage.
So I just want to confirm with, um, the building inspector, since he's the one that interprets the code in person. And I'll let you know his response as well, so that if there is square footage on that, you can tell me what is.
Well, we can tell you.
Don't tell me now, it's late, and that's mad.
So I assume that sign's on both sides?
Uh, yes, yes, it is.
So...
I look, by the way, I look in the back, it's like there was a sign. I'm sorry. Mr. Chuck?
Yes, it's on both sides.
No, but it's, I thought we had the measurement.
You do, um... One and a half high?
Yeah, what's its, what's its facing surface area?
Seven, seven, it's a long letters.
It may also be considered like an address sign under your code, which would be exempt, but I'll check with the building inspector.
That's what Steve was mentioning to me, he thought it was...
It was before you, you want to consider it all.
Yeah.
That's what's...
But you're thinking ahead, because it will have presidential.
Yeah.
Nope, it's a good point.
Steve was mentioning to me before, he thought it was identification sign.
That's the one that I read, um, I, I also thought maybe an, um, an address sign, but I'm not sure, so like I said, I'll talk to Mike, I'll go back to you guys and to the board. I just want to make sure that whatever it is, I can drop a footnote, or you can get whatever you need.
Thank you. And I think it's about twenty square feet.
Apply for whatever you need, not get.
Nineteen and a half is what Chuck's calculating, but... Yeah.
It's almost eight.
No, that's nine, because the clock... No, 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 they did change the clocks. You think we've only been here a half hour?
Yeah, until me.
Wow! So how are we drawing up an interpretation?
Um, right now it sounds like everyone is agreeing with how the interpretation was presented, that it is a supporting structure, um, and also that you're considering the eight and eight, so that would be, I think, what I'm getting.
Right, well, if it's a supporting structure, it's not included, correct?
Then I would say that, I would actually, I would include that before, I was thinking maybe just drop a footnote, but I think it needs to be in the main part, so that it's clear. So then you wouldn't need to consider the area variance at this time, but you do need to complete seeker.
Yeah. We could take, we should be lead in an uncoordinated review?
Yes.
I haven't had time to look at the, um, short form that you, I just got it today.
No, we just...
You can complete seeker at the next meeting, I just wanted to say that, then, then standing...
Well, if it's an interpretation, I guess technically it's...
A type two.
Type two.
Type two, yeah.
So if there's no variance.
Well, because it doesn't need to go, I was gonna say, didn't need, we didn't need to wait for the G M L to come back, because it's...
If it's a county, I mean, if it's, uh, interpretations.
Yeah, but I don't have it drafted tonight, so...
We're coming back anyway, we know that, so, so, uh, we don't want to push.
And you might have to come back if the colors of the signs are more than allowed because of the, because of the code that has, what, three colors or something?
We made amendments today.
Oh, you did?
Well, if they're the same shade of blue.
That's been changed.
Well, that's a good...
I'll ask the questions, are we really gonna get Chipotle?
Because I read...
Yeah, 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 they're, they're, I don't know if, yeah, they're... ARB approved. And approved. Yeah, no, Chipotle's approved.
Chipotle's, huh?
Yeah.
Oh, Chipotle's coming in?
Yeah.
Yes, those are real tenants.
But focusing it back on the application of dance.
Kelly, time is...
So we need a McDonald's.
Is there anybody from the public that wants to speak? Jess?
What'd she say?
Yes, will this Starbucks...
Working on it, working on it.
Uh, you could make a motion to close a public hearing and to authorize...
I make a motion to close a public hearing.
And have counsel draw up a, oh, we have to have two different, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Do you have a motion to have counsel draw up a, just decision based on the conversation that we just had? I'll make that motion, so you don't have to repeat it. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so, all right.
Thank you, yeah.
All righty.
Sorry we took up most time tonight. I hate to be that person.
Well, now it's been almost an hour.
Do I have a motion to adj... Do you have anything else, Mr. Brady?
The deliberation on Ross.
Oh, right, because we did the one for me and... All right. So basically, she needs a special permit for that additional dwelling unit, but because it's part of the existing house, she doesn't need any variances, uh, any square footage limitation or anything, correct? So, can we just make a motion to, if we, after we discuss it, to either give her that or deny a special permit for...
I would say to, I want to make sure that we draft the decision that contains the required conditions that are in the code, so you could authorize me to draft a favorable or unfavorable decision after your discussion.
Okay. So what do you want to do with Ross? She has a two-story ha, you know, there's two stories to her house, um, top floor's about two hundred feet bigger than the bottom, which obviously the bottom is more than twenty-five percent, but because it's not an addition, no construction is gone on, um, she's not limited to that twenty-five percent.
So there's no, like, no twenty-five percent?
No, no thousand square feet, no twenty-five percent, there's no, it's not a new unit, it's part of the existing house, um, it's just, bottom floor's being repurposed for additional dwelling unit.
How does the prosecutor into the little moratorium, do mother daughters...
She probably shouldn't have been in the moratorium. So...
So that's the only reason why all the mother daughters are now coming back to you? Because they were on hold for so long, so they're getting one of them together.
Yeah, I think we have a few more that are coming. We had to pick and choose who put their application at first, to see who came before us. Does anybody have a problem issuing a special permit to her? For, it's her mother and her sister, she said, she's gonna have to give the names and have them sign and everything, but, uh...
And, I'm sorry, if you're referring to the number of, if they're dealing, that would be as well...
That, there's only two...
Only two.
Two, two relatives.
Okay.
Two family members, I guess they call it.
Okay.
Anybody have a problem with that? You good? Okay, so do I need to make a motion, right, to have counsel draw up a favorable draft decision for a special permit for Silvee Ross, consistent with the conference, the discussion that we just had?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anything else from the board before we, I make a motion to adjourn?
I do have one question.
Oh, yeah.
With this, I, I feel bad, what are we, what is the next step for Valdez?
Yeah, so I informed her, I got her email address, um, tonight. It seems like there's a bit of confusion and miscommunication that's happening, and she's been applying to different boards, obviously when you go to one board, you're not gonna get all of the information that the planning board got, there's no need for you to, you only get what you need to see, what's given to you and what you should see to analyze it, um, under the statutory requirements for this board. So I had previously emailed her engineer, and I emailed that to you as well, so you had that. He did respond to me, but she hasn't emailed him on for, to continue with this application, so I suggested that she get a copy of that from her engineer, over I also said that I would provide her, uh, if she gave her email address, which she did, with the information